Twenty-third day of June twenty twenty-five, and I call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call?
Mayor Pro Tembaledez.
Here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember De Francis.
Present.
Mayor, you have form.
Thank you, Georgina. Uh, can we stand for the invocation? And Mike?
Lord, thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather outside and the rain that you've given us, and we pray that more of it will come. Pray you give us wisdom as we handle the business of the city of Bertram today, Lord, and move forward with this. We thank you for the opportunity in this country that we do have to to meet here and do business. We pray that you will be with our police department and all the police departments out there as they keep us safe, and particularly in the minds of our military right now, that you will keep them safe abroad as they handle the the business that they do. All the blessings that we have living in this country. Pray for a wonderful day.
Bledge of allegiance. Bledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any community input? Okay. Community input. Action items. Discuss and consider appointment of individuals to fill vacancy on the city council. So we've got, uh, all the people here that want to be appointed. Probably just take this time for y'all to come up to the front and, uh, state your name when you feel like you should be on the council, and, um, we'll ask questions at that point in time of you guys. So, um, who wants to go first? Alan, I guess you do, huh?
Right here.
I thought you were coming to shake our hand.
Uh, name's Alan Stark. I moved here in twenty twenty-three. And what was further questions you wanted?
So, uh... If, um, you were to be appointed as an alderman, do you understand that you're this, uh, twelve o'clock?
Yes, yes.
That be a problem?
Not at all.
Mr. Stark, any specific reason you'd like to be an alderman?
Well, I've always thought about doing city council, but, um, didn't have job time because I've been working crazy hours at a previous job. But once I moved here, I bought my last house unless something drastic happens, so this is where I'm gonna live for the rest of my life. And I was like, you know what? Now's time.
Hey, thank you.
And where where do you come from?
Where I come? I was from in Burnett before this. But I I was born in Austin, grew up in central Texas, so went to high school in Georgetown. So I seen a lot of change just over the years.
Were you able to be involved in any previous activities with government or any anything along those lines?
No, not at any level, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Andis Goble, and, uh, I've lived here since two thousand nineteen. My many branches of my family have been here since the eighteen hundreds. My grandfather served as mayor in Bertram in the mid-nineties. He was a retired Marine, um, born and raised in Burnett, but like I said, um, have deep ties to Bertram. Uh, own a business here. My office is right down Vaughn Street. I am on the chamber board, um, been serving on the Chamber of Commerce Board for about three years now. Also volunteer at the school quite a bit. I was I'm a former teacher, still have my certifications. I worked for cities for about fifteen years. Um, I worked for the city of Burnett, uh, the city of Copper's Cove as the recreation superintendent, which we had about five hundred acres of parkland, managed three pools, a senior centers, couple cemeteries. Um, later became the Parks and Rec Director for the city of Smithville that I served for about eight years. During that time, I worked with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, EDC, um, all the different boards that small towns have. Um, at the time, we did not have an economic development director, so I, um, did a lot of that just as a Parks and Rec Director. Uh, managed a lot of different grants, um, capital improvements, code enforcement type, just because I did man- I managed a a rec center that was open seven days a week, which, uh, CCA through the combined, um, community action also rented our commercial kitchen. So we had a senior center, a fitness center, um, the whole shebang. Um, so I have a lot of emergency management experience. I was a volunteer firefighter for five years. I took it pretty serious as before I had, uh, we adopted our four daughters, and then we ended up having the miracle baby. But, um, before that, I was a volunteer firefighter, took it very serious, got certified up, served, uh, on my volunteer fire department as the fire marshal voted in by the other firefighters. And so I have quite a bit of city experience, um, and kind of also in the family. My aunt served as mayor in Burnett. I have an uncle that served as the city manager of Platonia, so. And my dad worked for the city of Burnett for thirty-something years, as did my Uncle John, who used to be an inspector here, so.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, since you've family ties, you've been here for a while, what's your vision for Burnett for where?
Well, Bertram is obviously growing. It's gonna be growing at a very fast pace. And so managing that growth is gonna be really important and the expectations. Uh, with other cities, I've been part of the strategic planning, so, uh, sometimes like LCRA would have a person and and other government bodies would come in and help the city do strategic planning where we actually had to publish a document. Uh, usually it's a five-year plan. Some cities do ten-year plans, but ten-year plans are usually just too far in advance. Um, and so we did the open meetings where the public came in and voted on the projects. It was also gave, um, the city council and city manager and and my role as a as a Parks and Rec Director, um, a a goalpost, right? So we got city in input. This is the official plan. Let's go towards it. Um, if we're not hitting those goals, then we're doing a bad job. And so I think that that's essentially, um, if I were to be picked, be a part of that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, so my name's Lynette Courtney, and I've lived in Bertram for about a year now, uh, lived in Burnett my entire life. Um, we moved to Bertram because we love the small-town feel and being local inside, uh, a community full of kids. My house is a wrap for just all the kids in the neighborhood, and I absolutely love it. Um, what's prided me to be a part of city council is that I'm already in the local government, and just seeing that this small town's growth is vastly, I I don't even know if I put it the right words. It's growing so fast that, um, it's so strategic and needs management, but then also needs to keep the small-town feel into it. I love that you can walk down the street, that I can send my kids down to the local ice cream shop and not have to fear for something happening to them. Um, I'm the Director of Administration for Travis County ESD eight. I've been there two years now. I handle an eleven-million-dollar budget. I do all the strategic management, strategic planning and HR. Uh, we are growing just like Bertram. Uh, we are working on merger talks with another ESD to help utilize taxpayers' dollars to serve the community better. Um, before that, I worked for the city of Marble Falls for eleven years. I was the Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator, as well as the Administrative Assistant for the Fire Department. Public service is near and dear to my heart. I've never found more pleasure than serving those guys in that community. And it's about making them look good. That's the reason why I have a job. Um, I don't know. I don't know what else. What do you have for me?
It's the availability.
Yeah, so that's the really unique part of my job is that I have the ability to work from wherever I need to. Um, today's a remote day, so I take two hours of PTO and come hang out with y'all, and I can work from home from just about anywhere at any time. There are days that I do have to go in, but I schedule around them, and it's super flexible.
Uh, do you see any similarities similarities with where you've been and what you've been doing and how that can be brought here to help Bertram?
Absolutely. Just like Andis said, like strategic management, strategic goals, so getting the council together to figure out, how do you have that strategic man- management? How do you put your goals together for our little community, and then how do you get the community's impact and buy-in on that? Um, growth is going to happen. It's inevitable. We're so close to the Austin area, and this, I mean, the housing community here is crazy. You've got these guys out here that are talking about developments in our small town, but how do we as a city keep up with that infrastructure with tax dollars and unlimited budget, as well as make sure that we're not losing that small-town feel? Um, Marble Falls is hu- growing so fast, uh, they can't keep up with the growth. So it's finding innovative ways in order to provide the infrastructure and the city utilities that you need, as well as, uh, my area, we don't have water, um, where I serve now. So how do you find water in order to service fire services to put out fires in your neighborhood? Um, they're all similar, and it's all managing the limited resources that you have and finding unique ways to come up with this for a solution.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you, Lynette.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Lane Ship, I just want to apologize to everybody for not getting my name on the ballot to begin with. We wouldn't be going through all this.
Pull that thing down.
Does it go low enough?
Yeah.
So I just want to apologize to everybody here, because we wouldn't be going through this if I'd have had my name on the ballot. So my mistake, anyway. Uh, I'm just going up for basically reelection, reappointment.
Can you tell us all about yourself?
Hmm?
Can you tell us all about yourself?
Um, I'm Lane Ship. I live right here in Bertram. I've lived here since twenty-two, or twenty oh-three. Um, been on the city council for three, four years, something like that, and anyway.
All right, thank you, sir.
Well, for those that, uh, oh, I think Lane's, uh, opening statement. For those that didn't know, it sounded like you were like, if I would've been on the ballot, I would've won no matter what, so, uh, he was on the council prior. That's what he meant. Um, I'm I'm very pleased to see this much interest in in a spot here. And those of you that aren't appointed today, there's an election in May coming up for that exact spot, because this is only one year. And the chair I'm sitting in is probably gonna be available in two years, so I hope to see the same interest, uh, going forward. Uh, but for me, with everything going on right now, uh, we've got all these projects in the works, and just for continuity's sake, um, I'd like to reappoint Lane for that seat and see you guys in the future.
Is that your, are we doing this by motion?
Yeah, I mean, you have to, yeah.
Is that your motion?
That sounds like a motion.
That's my motion.
So we got a motion by John and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right, huh?
Or you can discuss, I mean, if you want to do a discussion. Have to.
This this for y'all that that came today, they're are wanting to be appointed, this is a tough part for y'all, and I, um, you get to hear us talk amongst ourselves on this part of it. Um, so I commend you for showing up for this part of it. So let's discuss.
I'm, I understand what you say, John, and agree at some point, but also I was informed that many opportunities were given for Lane to put his name on, and it seemed like, oh, well, I'm on here. I'm gonna make it. I don't need to put my name. I'm not gonna worry about it. And I don't feel comfortable with that attitude. So I I'm leaning towards someone with, um, experience, with somebody newer, I guess, like myself, or like, I don't know, better word. But, uh, I like what Lynette had to say, what she has to bring in her answer just to the question of what do you see in the future. She gave me a nice answer that I was happy with, and it wasn't I, 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 I. It was them, 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 what we did for them. So I'm leaning in that direction. Can't make a motion on anything yet, right?
Yeah.
We have to deal with the other one. Okay.
So we got a motion. That motion passes, so Lane is the one that's gonna be appointed for the alderman position for the next year.
And I would like to see you guys in the next next elections, especially for this seat right here.
John's a recruiting expert.
Mayor, do you want to do swear him in?
What's that? Yeah. We need to swear him in, so, uh, presentation two-point, uh, one is administering the oath of office to Lane. I'll do that right now. Not for me. Want to switch?
You can go sit up there now.
Wrong foot, just my opinion, but okay.
Action items, three-point-one, discuss and consider ordinance five-one-dash-zero-six-two-three-two-five, ordinance of the city council of the city of Bertram, Texas, abandoning a city right-of-way located on lots known as one-oh-one, one-oh-three, one-oh-five, and two-oh-one Heritage Grove Road, Bertram, Texas, and phase one of the Bertram Oaks subdivision, and providing an effective date.
Before we move on to to that, Mayor, and and you may have done it because I was reading, did you put on the record that Lane took the bench? So we have on the record what time?
Oh, the time that Lane shipped. So... Did you want me to do that under the presentation?
No, you can just just say it.
Okay.
Say it on the record. Say. Lane Ship took the.
Lane Ship is now alderman. He's the one that took the, uh, appointed alderman position, and that's at twelve-twenty.
Okay, perfect. That's what I wanted. Okay, now we can go to this. So this item, if y'all will remember, is an ordinance that we brought back because the subdivision plat in this situation has a right-of-way, I guess, that's on there, that's the city's right-of-way, and that needed to be abandoned, so it's not on the plat. That's what this does. That's all that this does in front of you. My understanding is that since the last meeting, there has been a question as to whether or not the PEC easement that goes at the same place as our wide right easement has actually been abandoned. It was represented at the meeting that it had been, and so my understanding is now there's a question of whether it actually has been. Somebody reached out to PEC to find that answer, but I don't know if we got it. So this would take care of the right-of-way. I'm fine with it. It's good, but then now the question is, what do we do with the PEC easement if it actually still does exist?
So can we approve that now, and if that comes up, deal with that later?
I I mean, you can approve this ordinance now, yes, and you can, and that would take care of the city's right-of-way, which is fine and clear. I don't have a problem with that. The the question is PEC and would that a col-? The only concern I have is would that cause a problem with PEC? Because it was represented at the last meeting that PEC had vacated that easement, but my understanding is now there's a question as to that.
So, yeah, Gary reached out to them, um, last Wednesday, I believe, and emailed to PEC asking, uh, for acknowledgement of the abandonment of that easement, because my understanding it is on the plat. If we record the plat without the easement and PEC didn't agree to that, then their easement needs to be repart- be part of the plat. Um, so that's why Gary said, so he's o- okay with approving with conditions, the PEC, as long as PEC comes back with the okay, the way that it's drawn up.
Okay.
Passing this ordinance based on approval. Confirmation from PEC that they did release their.
Okay.
Were y'all aware of that?
Hey, everyone. I'm Richard Pham, the civil engineer on the project. Just to kind of, um, reiterate on what, um, Michael mentioned. We spoke to PEC. This is more of a blanket easement. There's no easement with, um, you know, with this easement. And so the easement has been abandoned by releasing, um, the easement, the blank easement due to the utilities being removed. And so, um, that's what the confirmation we received from PEC, and we can provide that as well.
Yeah, we just didn't have it, so Gary hadn't seen it, so.
Okay.
I make a motion. We adopt ordinance five-one-zero-six-two-three-two-five with the condition that the PEC easement has been abandoned.
Well, second. Got a motion by John? Second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion passes. Three-point-two, discuss and consider resolution number five-nine-eight-dash-zero-six-one-zero-two-five, resolution of the city council of the city of Bertram, Texas, accepting dedication of the streets and infrastructure and a portion of the subdivision known as Bertram Oaks U-two.
So this one, the only thing that's, and I don't even know if that's the, I think I gotta turn it on to, right? Okay, the, uh, the the only issue, if you want to call it that, is that we have the maintenance bonds, which are good, but the maintenance bond for, so there's two different maintenance bond. One is for the lift stations, perfect. The one for the, all the other infrastructure, which is drainage, paving, um, and there's some other things in there. Says that it's subject to a contract, like a development agreement or something like that. But the development agreement in this case is specific only to the infrastructure. It doesn't, or sorry, the lift station, so it doesn't go beyond that. So I've asked them to provide a confirmation from the surety that if, and we obviously hope this never happens, right, with the maintenance bond? But if something were to happen and the city were to go after the maintenance bond, and we would say, okay, hey, we we need some maintenance done on drainage, for just for example. And we said, and they said, okay, well, it says it's subject to a contract. Show us the contract. And we were like, well, here's the contract, and the contract specifically said lift station. Would the surety come back and say, no, you're not gonna cover it? And so they've, they're gonna give us that assurance. So my pro- my recommendation is adopt the resolution, uh, approve the acceptance on the condition that they provide that the surety will will include that all the drainage and paving and everything, even if the contract does not.
Okay.
And they're aware of that.
Mayor, we did, how about the dedication?
So the dedication day we talked about includes the road, lot four, and then it includes the, um, the plat as an exhibit. So I'm good with that. The most recent one they sent over.
So what about park fees?
Oh, no, park fees, that's a different.
So, yeah, we we do not have park fees in lieu of park dedicated land. Now, they're gonna have a park in there that's gonna be owned and maintained by their by their HOA, is what I've been told.
Y'all aware of that? Bill?
So, good afternoon. Bill Barton with Lennar. Uh, yes, we actually, we thought the park fee issue was was taken care of. We're making improvements of approximately five-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars in the community for park improvements, whereas our park fee is about sixty-six thousand. So I thought we were kind of making a trade-off where we actually had higher cost.
Yeah, but if it's not dedicated to the city for the city's use and the HOA is maintaining it, it's not park dedicated land according to.
Well, it's not park dedicated.
It's not dedicated to the city. It's owned and maintained by the HOA. So it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per lot in lieu of park dedicated land or being.
Do you remember when? Because I remember that discussion, because then y'all like show slides and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, what we were gonna do, play scape and.
But we went through and couldn't find, like, there's nothing in the DA that talks about it. What, wow. How would, do you remember how that was done? I apologize. I've slept since then. Like, because you were talking, because I do remember you were talking about, like, there was a piece of property, and so there was, y'all were gonna put the money into it instead of, I do remember that.
Instead of paying the park fees.
They got a very, I remember they got a variance because they didn't have enough park land. I've slept since then, too. This is from my memory. Yeah. So they they got a variance because they didn't have enough park dedicated, they didn't have enough land in lieu of park land to dedicate. They were like a point-two-five off or something like that. You're really close to not to having the number of acreage, oh, needed. So they got a variance on the number of acreage, but they were gonna maintain it, and their HOA was gonna keep it. So.
Part of the conditions, right?
What's that?
That, uh... That they, uh, give the money instead of park, um, that they give the money.
I mean, it is, yes, but then, but the question is, is, you know, what is that, what does that money look like? Does it mean?
A lot of money.
Well, no, no, what I mean is, does that mean, and that, this is, I guess, y'all's call up there with the vote. Does that mean the writing of a check, or does that mean the purchase of of equipment in lieu of writing a check? I mean, that's, I've seen that done before. I don't know if Bertram's done that, but I've seen that done before.
Like, what do you mean, equipment?
Renovation to another city park in lieu of writing a check. I've seen that done before. Um, so that would be, that would, but that would be on y'all's purview as to what that needed to look.
I I would say if this if this subdivision was more centrally located in town, where it wouldn't just be, I mean, it's, nobody's gonna walk to that park and use that park over there. They're gonna have to go down a county road and go down, or eleven-seventy-four and get into there to use that park.
Couldn't use it anyways because it's an HOA, correct?
No, he said it's gonna be open.
He said it's gonna be open, and it's not gonna be fenced off or anything, but technically the HOA is gonna own that park and maintain it.
So it's open to the public. So, it's open to the public?
No, it's owned by the HOA. He's saying it's going to be open. He, Lennar, is saying it's going to be open, but the HOA may feel differently later.
Yeah, there'd be like...
Good point.
So, do we just make that part of the...
So, right now, the ordinance says it's either be in lieu of or parkland dedicated. That's what the ordinance says.
Okay. And is this all part of the conditions of approval? Do we need to state that?
Uh, because the resolution doesn't have anything to do with...
Okay.
So, I didn't, I didn't review this to look to see what, what happens if they don't pay. And so, I don't know.
Okay. Is this something we're going to deal with later on? Georgina? Is this something that we're going to deal with later on?
Well, it's, the decisions up to the city council, do you want...
What's the intent of parkland dedication?
So, we utilize that money to utilize it for park, parks?
You were talking about the money, I said parkland dedication.
Uh, fee.
No.
Yeah, so the purpose of parkland dedication is so the city has parks?
Yes.
Right.
So, if they're giving us a park...
They're not giving us a park.
If they are building a park and opening it up to the public, I'd say they're giving us a park. The icing on the cake is that we don't have to maintain it, so why are we, I mean, unless we just want a check. If we do, let's say that, but other than that...
I think it's because if the HOA can then say, hey, we own it.
Could we have conditions in the HOA where it's open to the public? I mean, that's what I'm getting at. Either we want a check or we want a park. And if they're building a park, I'd say that would satisfy the parkland dedication intent, correct?
Then it would have to have it written in the HOA that it is open to the public, even though they're going to pay for it.
Has the HOA been formed yet?
Yeah, we got some documents.
Okay.
We got some documents, but I don't know what's in it.
We could enter into a one-page, three-party agreement between the HOA, the developer, and the city saying that this is going to be a public park and...
I mean, unless I'm missing something.
As long as it covers the city, you know, that, even, because I can just see it down the road, well, it's an HOA, we pay for this, y'all can't be in here. So, as long as it's cleared with that, with the HOA, that it is open to the public, then...
I mean, that's not uncommon. Even the neighborhood I live in, Cedar Park, has several parks that are all HOA-approved, but they are not fenced off. Anybody can...
I know, I've been in one of those before, and they told me I had to leave.
Really?
An HOA.
I think that's personal.
People have been on city parks.
They do that in Leander.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Because they got a pool, so you can't go to the pool.
The pool's different, but I'm talking about a park park.
They've got a play, a playscape, like a water park, like...
Now, I can't recall what this park looks like you're building, so...
It's pretty nice.
Has it been built already, is it up?
Just like the photos they gave us before, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's where I, the way I see it.
So, we just need to get that in writing from you guys that it's going to be open to the public on that HOA? Okay. Good deal. Excuse me?
So, the, yeah, so it'd be acceptance on the two conditions. One, an agreement that the park stays open, and then, two, that we get some assurance from the surety that it'll be covered, even though the agreement doesn't specifically say drainage, paving, all that. So, those two conditions.
I make a motion, we adopt resolution number 598-061025 on those two conditions.
Yeah.
Motion by John, and the second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Just remember what you said there, Mike, all right?
Okay.
Do you have that written down, Georgina?
Good.
3.3, discuss and consider final plat application, performance bond, impossible plat note for lot exception on final plat of four Grandia State Phase Two. On this one, or?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at me. So, the, if y'all remember at the last meeting, there was some discussion regarding the maintenance bond, which, or performance bond, sorry, which we hadn't seen yet, but they had present. So, we were provided a copy of the performance bond on the 13th, which I think the meeting was the 11th, so it was two days later, or 12th, which in the meeting was the 10th. But, so it was two days later. Anyway, I responded back the next day and said that the language of the maintenance bond was not, or, performance bond, sorry. Performance bond wasn't sufficient, and sent that back out. And then, a couple of days later, which I think was like the 17th, which was the Tuesday, um, let me get my calendar out so I'm not making up dates.
Seventeenth.
Yes, the 17th, which is a Tuesday. So, then there was a response to a couple of the issues on there, and then I reiterated on an email that the performance bond still had the language issues in that. So, then on Thursday, the 19th, I was able to speak to Steve Hurst, who's attorney, representative, developer, and we had a conversation about the performance bond. He brought up the issue of possibly doing a letter of credit, which we had done on phase one, and so, we talked about that, and I didn't hear anything. And then, at 4:43 on Friday afternoon, I received the development agreement from Mr. Hurst on behalf of the developer, basically, which obviously is not in front of you today, and so, we can't discuss it because that's, even if we wanted to, that was within 72 hours, so we couldn't do it. And the, so it's not before you, but the premise of the development agreement is to ratify the performance bond that was signed on June 6th. So, it's an agreement that says that we're going to do a performance bond, but it already has the performance bond attached. And so, that, I got that, looked at it this morning, sent a response out to everybody. So, I don't even know, and I know we've got some representatives here, I don't even know exactly what the path forward is at this point, because we had the performance bond, which I made it clear within hours of receiving it, that it wasn't, that the language wasn't sufficient, it has not been addressed. And then, now we have this new development agreement that came over basically at 5:00 on Friday afternoon, knowing that the meeting was today, and so, it's not before you. And so, I don't even know what the path forward is. But as of right now, based on the information I have, I could not recommend approval of the plat at this point because of those issues. Because the, just to give you some idea of the purpose of the performance bond, so what we were talking about in that case is a maintenance bond. That's after the city has accepted. So, now the city has accepted the Bertram Oaks infrastructure, and so, now it becomes the city's responsibility. And so, that's why we get a maintenance bond to, that, so if anything happens, you know, in the quick time, then that maintenance bond, we go after the maintenance bond, and the maintenance bond pays for it. This is a performance bond. The purpose of the performance bond is because they're asking us to approve the plat before they've approved, before the infrastructure has been completed. And so, this is to cover the city, so in case we prove the plat, they move forward, and then they don't perform, they don't finish the project, then the city can go after the performance bond as a financial assurance for what has not been finished. The normal procedure under the, under our subdivision ordinance is not to prove the plat until all the infrastructure has been completed. So, this is a deviation from that, but not a unheard-of deviation. It does happen from time to time. And, but the performance bond that we have, I'm not proving the language. And so, that, so because I'm not proving the language, we don't have a performance bond, so we don't have any financial assurance. So, when I had that conversation with their attorney, the response was to get a development agreement, which is not a bad path, but it's a path that should have happened two or three months ago if we were going to be here today. And so, that's what I'm saying, is I don't, one, we don't have any of the financial assurance on the plat, so I can't recommend approval of it. Can't even recommend approval of conditions at this point because we don't even have a path forward. Now, are they pursuing a development agreement? And so, then, it's a development agreement is meant to pick up a performance bond that is after the, that is predates the development agreement? I don't have an answer to that question. And then, also, with regard to the development agreement, the language in there specifically says that if they don't finish it within three months of the date of the development agreement, which the earliest we could hear it just by Texas Open Meetings Act would be at the July 8th meeting, is that if they don't finish in three months, then the city is now on the hook to finish. And that's what the development agreement says. And based on the history of the subdivision with the, with the punch list coming out in January, and now here we are in mid to late June, so we had, best case, you're talking five months, it's actually longer than that, five months, that it hasn't been, I have a concern that I, that if they didn't do it, finish it in five months, are they going to finish it in three? And then, I, but what I don't want to recommend to the council is that we go ahead and accept the plat on these conditions with this DA, and then, three months from now, three months from the July meeting, if that's what it was put on, that now, all of a sudden, the city is responsible to finish the job, because that's, that's not what we do as cities. So, that's, that's the concerns that I have at this point. I know there's representatives here, happy to have a conversation, but right now, I can't recommend approval of the plat based on the information we have.
Okay. Thank you. Lance, Nathan, y'all?
Hi, Mayor, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Nathan's a full-on, straight-grade engineer. The development agreement that we presented to Mr. Rivera was, was a phase-one development agreement, which would change, change it from phase one to phase two with the numbers we have to phase two performance bond. So, as far as any language thing, y'all are on the hook. I mean, it's the same phase-one language in the development agreement that was pretty steeped through. So, we're trying to do what, so, this, right in my face. Our last meeting, you asked, is there, is there a way forward? And that's what we're, that's what we're given, we're given the option to move forward. This is, as far as the comments that we received today for the development agreement, they're very minor. We're talking about kids and order of operation, something that can be simply taken care of in 24 to 48 hours, between our attorney and Mr. Rivera and with your blessing, Mayor. The final approval, you know, we can get it, we can get it taken care of. I don't see any reason why we're going to push it back to July 8th, when we have an opportunity to keep moving forward. You know, there's been talk about five months, it's taken five months to finish things from the January, from January punch list. Punch list items are gone. Problem is, is that when it came around to the mark of end of February, I saw that there was issues, because we got all our rain back in February, that there was issues with the drainage. We found out that one of the, one of the channels were not, was not constructed correctly. So, it was something that Gary, you know, which he probably, he wouldn't have been able, I didn't see it, I went on the walk as well in January, so I didn't see it until things were cleaned up and it started raining, that we saw the issue of. So, we took it amongst ourselves, which we should have. We just, you know, had to sign off on it. But, we've taken care of that issue, that's, or we're in the process of taking care of that issue. And those are the only items that are actually on the performance bond to be completed. So, as far as this attitude about we've taken five months to complete a punch list from January is just essence of that to pass, and misunderstanding here, because as I said in the last, last meeting, these items that we are, we are knocking out are items that are not even on the punch list. Now, you know, I, I would speak for my client, you, you know, I've done nothing but tried to do the right thing considering the circumstances. It's unfortunate for the things that are kind of set up out there with the issues we've had with the contractor. But I will say that there was opportunity that somebody could have possibly pushed this issue underneath the... There was an opportunity for that, and my client decided not to take that opportunity and move forward with correcting the actions or the actions of the contractor out there. And I believe that, that that should be taken into account and consideration today when we're asked you to approve the plat with the condition that our attorneys work through the final comments of the development agreements, and that Mayor gives kind of blessing for the development agreements, so we can get this plat approved. As far as path, paths moving forward, the minute that the development agreement would go this route, once the mayor's half within the attorneys as well, we will move forward with the senior interest for the plat, all right? One thing right now that we have to do in order to keep this project moving forward is to get substantial completeness with Pay Center Home, so we can start a 30-day review period and close the lots. We're not closing on the lots until these items over here are taken care of as well. Pay Center's, Pay Center's not going to allow that. So, no matter what, these items are going to have to be taken care of. But what we're allowing for this to do, what for us is, what you would be allowing for us to do is to record the plat, you know, paperwork, get it recorded, that we can start getting address, an address file with the county. Pay Center can start gearing up with getting, you know, the permitting situated, they can do that, it's already, get address, addresses. They can all get teamed up and ready, moving forward. And then, that, that we're done, things are closed, and, I mean, that's, you know, like I said, Mayor, we're trying to find ways to really move forward and stay positive that, that things are going to be... When I first started on this project, I don't think there was a senior person that said, you know, that, that I could solve the, solve the issues that we had out there. You know, there was water lines, exposed water lines in the ditches, you name it. There was, there was a lot of issues already taken, and I came off board, I figured out some, nobody would have, would have thought about what we can do with this. I had a lot of doubt towards me on that, and, and I, I'd like for, for y'all to have the same part of the attitude as, as I did when I first started on this project, to get out high center field. You know, we're going to get this done. We're talking about months, and we're talking about years before. So, a year without years, without any direction or hope. So, I appreciate if y'all would consider the approval of this plat, the condition that, Mayor, he's the final blessing on the development agreement.
Okay, Nathan, y'all, you have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Nathan.
I'd just like to, Wayne Hartman, the deputy owner of the developer. I think one thing needs to be understood, and I could reiterate, and thank you for saying that, is that when he discovered a problem there, we went and looked at that, hired another consulting engineer to see if there was another solution. Took some time, and then we have, money doesn't grow on trees, so we had to go to our bank, there was a first mortgage, and get them to agree to extend additional money, because it cost more than $100,000 to fix these corporate issues. it cost more than $100,000 to fix these corporate issues. We're doing the right thing, getting, having repeated, uh, concerns that, oh, well, this should have been done January. It would have been done but for finding this problem. And those problems, because they involve finance and involve a lot of people's approval with first mortgagee and coordination of engineering and engineering solutions, that's why this punch list that was created in January has taken this long. And that would be true if anyone else were standing here. And I've extended additional money personally because we're paying interest at over $20,000 a month at the time, at the point at which we were solving a problem that our engineer found and in good faith we were addressing. And I just ask that you consider that as purpose. This wasn't us deciding in January, February that we're going to kick back and not do anything. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Wayne. Counsel, y'all have any question?
Uh, just, uh, I'd like to say, you know, from seeing this project from the beginning, uh, how long ago was that?
Five years ago.
Five years ago? When it started? Uh, I do appreciate the work you guys are doing out there right now, because, um, it, it, it was a tough one. And, but you, you have to understand our, um, our skepticism, I, maybe that, maybe that's not the right word, but.
I understand that our engineer caught on us in the middle of COVID, we were in 2022, and left us, having not set, as Georgina knows and Gary Mark Curry knows, having not set proper elevations, which the city repeatedly asked for. And I asked him for five months before then, provide us elevations. And then when we finally prompted him by hiring another engineer, he quits on us. And I appreciate Nathan stepping in and taking over what was a target.
Yes.
Not of our creation or our hopes. I appreciate everything you've done, your indulgence, everyone who has helped us with this. This has been a financial disaster for me, but I do not quit. And I'm finishing this and I ask for your help.
At the end of the day, we all want a good finished product. That, that's what we all want. I know, Mayor, you're pretty close to this project. You've been kind of watching it from the beginning. I mean, what do you think? Moving forward?
I mean, it has changed a whole lot and been pushing for this project to get it done and everything. But at the same time, also, I have to listen to what my attorney has to say. I have to take all that into consideration of what to do. Because when it gets to the legal part of it, I'm not legal. Our attorney is. And I want the best for what's, you know, what's best for the city. The project has come on, along great. It looks good out there. But still, when it comes down to it, um, legal aspects of it, um, did that change your mind any?
Yeah, so the, the problem that we really run into right now is that, I mean, we've, we've got little problems, but, and I do agree that it's in a much better position than it has been before.
Mm-hmm.
And we are talking months, maybe even weeks, not years anymore. So I agree with all of that. The, the problem is that the, when I originally received the performance bonds on the 12th of this month, which was a couple of days after our council meeting, and responded the next day and said, this isn't the correct language, then, um, nothing really happened until, and we gave them a deadline at the meeting noon on Wednesday to make sure that we have everything, because Thursday was a holiday and Georgina was going to be out on Friday. And so to get everything reviewed, and I didn't get a call until Thursday morning, which was obviously after the, oh, so actually, I got the call Tuesday afternoon, but I was in court in Travis County. So I answered, I called back on the first thing I did Thursday morning. And then the DA didn't get to Friday afternoon. So the DA is not on the agenda today. It can be. Texas Open Meeting Act, 72 hours beforehand, it has to be, um, on there. So the DA is not, that agreement is not on the agenda. So procedurally, you don't have, I mean, I take that back. You can do it if you want to do it, but my recommendation legally is because we didn't have it 72 hours beforehand, or it's not on, it's not on the agenda, um, to be considered at this time. And part of that is the, so that makes the DA become underneath the performance agreements, which I still have an issue with a, even if it was signed today, a June 23rd development agreement that basically ratifies a June 6th, um, performance bond that was done before the agreement is replaced, that references a contract that didn't exist when it was created. I still have a problem with that in the enforceability issue. But that would ultimately be a call if y'all are willing to take that risk. But the, the, the solution being the DA that was sent over to me at 4:43 on Friday afternoon is not before you today. That will have to wait until the July meeting. That's just Texas Open, Texas Open Meeting Act.
Go ahead, Nathan.
We're not asking for approval of the development agreement. We're asking for approval of the plat and the condition that y'all give the mayor the, um, the approval to, uh, to review and, uh, or finalize the, the development agreement with the help of attorneys. So, you know, as far as the 72 hours required, we're not asking for approval of development. We're asking for approval.
But you are, because you're saying give them the, give the mayor the authority to approve.
We've already done this. We did, we did this exactly in Phase One. And, and, uh, it, we, we can figure out any way to stop some of this, no matter what, we, we know is fine. But, you know, there, there's, there's, there's a problem here and it's an opportunity for a solution, and I'm getting you one. And I, I think that if, if we want this project to move forward and keep, keep, keep going the right direction, we, we got to start approving things. We're, we're, we're giving an opportunity. I mean, pardon from our wrong, I mean, kid.
Did we do the same thing with the DA, where y'all sent it the day before and asked for it to be on the agenda?
The sentence that language is the face.
Doesn't matter.
I understand, we're not putting you on the spot. We're giving you time to, to work things out with, with, with our attorney. I don't see.
You had over a week to send us over the DA and you didn't.
The, the email that we got back from Mr. Rivera, um, it stated that the, um, the attached maintenance agreement, and so it was, it was very confusing. I, I would say that on my part, I, I should have called and said, what do you mean by this? But he sent us a maintenance agreement and I didn't understand what he meant whenever we were talking about performance, uh, performance bond. Um, so our maintenance bond language, right, what you sent over to us, a maintenance agreement?
Right.
Okay. So it was, it was, it was a little confusing and I guess, uh, Steve and, um, our attorney finally got around to, to talking to Mr. Rivera and figuring out that, uh, well, you know, this is what we did on the first round was, was a, a development agreement. So it's what our attorney, our attorney, I guess, just, I wasn't putting you to the, to the conversation, but I mean, I, I don't see, I don't see why we can't figure out a solution and can't figure out how to, um, just work together. So it's simple, we're not talking about major development agreement, the thing's only three pages long. It's the same thing as the previous.
It is, it's the same.
It's the same language, it's three pages.
But it, we don't feel good about that, right?
We can work them out, but.
I, I, I don't think it's before you today. I think under the Texas Open Meeting Act, it wasn't timely.
I think that, I mean, I'm all about moving things forward, as you know, in, in the past. I, I hate to see anything get stagnant and not move forward, try to figure it all out and everything, Nathan. But at this point, I just don't see a, a path forward. We had to move to the July 8th. I mean.
Well, I appreciate it, Nathan.
Really, I have to take, uh, counsel on that. Y'all want to vote on this? Counsel, have anything they want to talk about? Any discussions?
So, what's that? Can what?
We're, this isn't open for any, uh, a disc, uh, vote or anything because we have to move it.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's up to, it's up to y'all. I mean, you, y'all could still, even with my saying that the DA's not on the agenda, y'all, I mean, that would be ultimately up to y'all. Would the question be voidable? That's another issue, but y'all can.
So what, what it says on the agenda is what Mike's saying is the final plat application, a performance bond and a possible note with a lot exception from the final plat. Were we okay with that note?
I'm okay with the language of the note.
Okay. So that was a question I didn't know on Wednesday, posting this agenda, had no idea about a DA. Why isn't a DA, why is a DA even needed at this point? I thought that would, I thought the performance bond that he had in his hand at that last meeting, that we didn't get until like a couple of days later. That, that performance bond language was incorrect.
Right.
Right? Okay, so why is a DA even needed?
So the reason why the DA is needed is because.
Because they said, mentioned it.
What the performance bond says is that there's a contract that exists between the developer and the city. And so this work is being done because of that, because of that contract. The difference between what we have in this situation and with Lennar previously is there actually is a development agreement in that case that we have with Lennar. And so we can say, okay, here's an agreement. Now, the question is, is since the development agreement doesn't include this language, can the, can we get something from the surety to say, yes, as long as it says the, you know, Bertram Oaks, is that okay? Which it does say Bertram Oaks. So is that okay? And so that's different. In this case, we don't have a development agreement. So we have a performance bond that is predicated on a contract that does not exist.
Okay.
And so the, what, and so what he was talking about was the confusion was, is I sent an email and said, okay, hey, listen, the language for the performance bond is, is not good. And I sent him a sample of a, of a maintenance bond that has the correct language. It says, under the code of the city of, you know, being built according to the, the city ordinances, the city of Bertram, all that kind of stuff. And so it was basically for them to use that language to create the performance bond. That's what, that's what that was for. That was the purpose. That was, because I'd already told them the week before that I wasn't comfortable with the language because it references a contract that doesn't exist. And so when nothing, there was no movement, then I said, okay, listen, here's, here's some language. Like I gave that to them, like, here's some language that is, is applicable to this situation. And then we ended up with the, the DA and the purpose, all the circular, to get back to the DA. The reason why there, that they suggested the DA is because the DA would now give us a contract on which the performance bond would be based. My concern with that issue would be, and, and we could find this answer, but we don't have it for today, is, is that okay from the surety perspective that they signed the bond, they executed the bond on the 6th of June, but the, the agreement that is referenced would not be dated until June 23rd? Would they still honor it? Because at the time that that June 6th went into place, there was no contract between the principal, which is the developer and the city.
It sounds like a simple, you know, for the surety company, just like this, uh.
It ultimately goes down, it, it, I think it all, ultimately goes down to, is this project ready for final plat recording, signatures and all that good stuff? The recommendation from city council, council attorney and city staff at this point is, no, it is not. It needs to be moved to the July 8th.
Right, it's just the plat.
This is the, we're talking about just the plat at this point. But I think that it, until we get, we've got to cross eyes, cross Ts, dot Is. And that has not been done. And I think we need to, we need to wait until the July 8th at this point.
Okay. So we, we need a motion to deny or to accept with conditions at this point in time, counsel?
So the problem, another problem we run into is because we have, you know, a time period by which we have to, so the three options would be to approve, approve the conditions or deny. And so the recommendation right now is deny. However, the applicant could always request that it be pushed to the July meeting, so therefore we wouldn't have to deny. But that would have to come with the approval of the applicant. Because I began, and, so this is procedural, because if we deny, then do they have to reapply? Do they have to resubmit?
Oh, we don't want to reapply. We don't want to do that. It'll slow everything down.
Right, we don't want to.
Do what? I'm sorry?
But what you're saying is if you pulled your application, willingly pulled it to the July 8th meeting, you don't have to reapply.
Yeah, we don't want.
We just push it to the July 8th.
You have to go through all that. That would slow everything down if we denied it. But we move it to the July 8th. If that's what y'all want to do, then we, we don't have to deny, don't have to reapply, don't have to do any of that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think the conditions with approval are, approval with conditions, if it, uh, lays it to the mayor and the, and our attorney, and they're not comfortable right now, I would say, yeah, deny.
July 8th meeting? Okay. Is it a motion for the Ju? Okay. So we just need a motion for that.
Just table until the 8th. Motion to table.
But we need that motion.
Motion to table until the 8th. The, uh, Grand Estates Phase Two plat.
Got a motion by Anthony?
Second.
And a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Future agenda items? Anybody? All right, let's get a motion.
Motion with adjourned.
Got a motion by Randall?
Second.
Second by Anthony? All in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned.
I'm sorry, who?
102.
Randall and myself.